Yep.
Oh, it's six o'clock. Okay, it is six o'clock and we're gonna call the March twenty-fourth City Council meeting to order, and we will begin with roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Otis?
Here.
I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item number four is public hearings. It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the South Third Street Trail Extension Project. Jenny, when was it published?
March fourteenth.
Any written comments received for or against the proposed project?
No, sir.
Anyone in the audience wishes to speak for or against the proposal? Alright then, so we will request staff report.
So for stat- or for City Council consideration tonight, are the plans, specifications, and bids received for the South Third Street Trail Extension Project? Just as a reminder, this is the project that starts at South Side Drive on the east side of South Third Street, runs along the east side of Third, crosses Pine Ridge, Pine Ridge Drive, and terminates just north of the pro- the extension of the property line currently owned by Hy-Vee. The plans and specifications, we estimated to be at a hundred and two thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. On March twelfth, staff held a public bid letting that yielded nine bidders, or nine valid bidders with one being rejected due to inconsistencies and not following the required submission requirements. Those bids ranged from seventy-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents to the high bid of a hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. The apparent low bidder for this project was Brothers Concrete of Des Moines, Iowa. Councils may be familiar with them as they completed the twenty-twenty-three Street Repairs Project, the twenty-twenty-four Street Repairs Project, and then they've also assisted Public Works in completion of a couple of emergency concrete repairs throughout the community. We believe that Brothers Concrete can be successful in this project. They've got the experience, and we've got the experience with them to feel confident in recommending them as the low bidder, and we recommend that City Council adopt the plans and specifications, award the contract to Brothers Concrete, and then approve that contract at tonight's meeting as well. Because of when we held the bid letting, we are able to do all three steps. Brothers was able to return the contract and bonds so that we can get, get started. The contractor has indicated an eagerness to get the project started. If I would have let him, they would have scheduled a pre-construction meeting a week and a half ago. So be happy to answer any questions the council may have, but we recommend approval and adoption.
Council, any questions? Nope, thank you. So I then need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Sorry.
And a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on then to item four A one, I need a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, adopting the plans. Motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item four A two, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, awarding the contract. I need a motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
I'll add just a couple of points on the wording of the contract. So to reiterate a little bit, I don't totally agree with the priority here, not enough to, to vote no, not that it would matter, but doesn't really connect anything meaningful, but it's a step in the larger picture. I do sort of understand that. Again, the, the timing, I think her priority could have been shifted a little bit. I do think, in the spirit of transparency, since we've had so many separate projects like this, if we could get a cumulative total for, for both the construction and the engineering on our trail connectivity projects over the last couple of years, I think that would be good, if only for me to understand and not make a mushroom out of mohell or whatever, but just to be able to reconcile seventy-seven thousand here, you know, a project here, a project there, what that adds up to. So, I know it's a work for staff, but meaningful in my opinion, if you don't mind.
Anything else from council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on then to item four A three, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, approving contract and bond. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on then to public hearing B, four B, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposed adoption of an ordinance to establish sewer connection districts southeast, north, northwest, and Big Creek Valley, and a connection fee schedule. Jenny, when was the notice published?
March fourteenth.
And have we had any written comments received for or against the proposed ordinance?
No, sir.
So at this time, we'd like to request staff to provide a report.
So for council's consideration tonight, is an ordinance establishing four separate sanitary sewer hookup fee districts. These are the sanitary sewer hookup fees that we've discussed at a couple of work sessions, but I'll kind of give an overview. So the southeast sanitary sewer district connected the existing sanitary, or the sanitary sewer that is in, was installed necessitating the southeast sanitary trunk sewer district, was an extension of the sanitary sewer along, the existing sanitary sewer along East South Side Drive east of Sailerville. It included the extension of oversized and overdepth sewer through the Antler Ridge subdivision, and the quantity of about four thousand one hundred linear feet. This was, the fee is based on the city's cost share for the overdepth and over, overdepth and oversizing of that sanitary sewer. So those are incurred costs that the council had agreed to previously, but this will recover one hundred percent of those costs. The north sanitary sewer district, that fee is being established for the future construction of approximately eight thousand three hundred linear feet of sanitary trunk sewer, general, to service areas generally located north of Northwest Hug Drive. This sewer would pick up near the existing northern limits of the large twenty-seven inch sewer, somewhere in the vicinity of Wolf Creek Townhomes is probably the easiest way to describe it. That sewer would then be extended up along Wolf Creek and would terminate on the north side of Northwest Hug Drive. These fees also include the upsizing and construction of parallel sewers to provide the capacity through the existing portion of town for the future development north of Northwest Hug Drive. The northeast sanitary sewer district, that fee is for the purposes of constructing approximately seventy-four hundred linear feet of trunk sewer that will start at the existing lift station down near East South Side Drive, continue north around Northwest Hundred and Tenth Place, and then run along the boundary of the private property and the backwaters of the Barrier Dam up until it terminates north of, East North Side Drive or Northwest Hundred and Eighteenth Avenue. Big Creek, the Big Creek sanitary sewer district is meant to recover the future costs of upgrading the TCI lift station as part of the preliminary plating process for the Four Seasons Polk City subdivision. It became evident that that lift station was going to be undersized at some point. I should have looked up the exact number, but there is a portion, or there is a point in the development agreement that was previously approved by the City Council of how many lots can be constructed before the TCI lift station is upgraded, just based on capacity. And then the proposed fees as part of this sewer district are meant to one hundred percent recover the future costs of upgrading that lift station. The proposed sanitary sewer hookup fees, as noted in our memo, are southeast sanitary sewer district, one thousand nine hundred and five dollars per acre gross, north sanitary sewer district would be one, nine eighty-five per acre gross, the northeast sanitary sewer district would be two thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars per acre gross, and then the Big Creek sanitary sewer district would be one thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. The council should recognize those, those are the fees that we last discussed. We feel comfortable with those based on our updated estimates. A few items about the ordinance that I'd like to make the council aware of is there is a provision in the ordinance for annual adjustment of the sanitary sewer fees. It gives two options, beginning January one of twenty twenty-six, that the council can either manually adjust those fees each year by adopting it via ordinance, or it automatically adds a three percent interest rate at the end of each year if the council were to choo- either to choose not to or failed to adjust them. The proposed hookup fees are based-
Sorry Travis, in case I forget. So is that, which one of those is in here, or is that an election to be made later?
It, it's either or. So if, if at the end of this year, council's like, you know, construction costs really haven't gone up, we want to make a zero percent increase, you would adopt it by ordinance, it would omit the three percent increase. The three percent increase only applies if the council fails to adopt an updated schedule, or an updated interest rate.
Okay.
So we can either default to a three percent, or take action, plus or minus, and whatever, if that makes sense.
So no action, default three percent?
Correct. And that three percent is based on state code and the rates allowed for special assessments, is what that, is what that percentage is based off of. So it gives you the option of either making no adjustment because you're afraid that you're creating fees that are exorbitant, or if you have a particularly inflated year in terms of costs, it could help offset some of that inflation. The proposed hookup fees are charged on a gross area basis. We did not, just because we don't, we, we don't want to project into the future how each parcel of land is developed, so there is a provision in there that all street lots, detention basins, floodplain outlots, those kinds of things, those are all counted in the, the fee, and the fee would be based on the total area of a final plat. As I kind of alluded to, the fees are payable at the time of each final plat, so if a subdivision is broken into several different phases, the developer would only be responsible, or the property owner would be just only responsible for those that are being platted at that time. If any property is subject to a development agreement that establishes a sanitary sewer hookup fee, if it predates this ordinance, that development agreement would drive and govern the administration of sanitary sewer hookup fees. This ordinance does not override anything that the City Council has previously approved that established sanitary sewer hookup fees. I guess the other thing that's worth mentioning is if the, the property that's hooking up is an existing pro- or an existing home, payment of the fee would be made at connection, it's not driven by a final plat. So it's whichever comes first, final plating or connection to the sewer, depending on the situation. I'd be happy to go into any more details, council would like me to, but that, that kind of gives the overview of what the ordinance contains.
Are the materials from our work session a month ago, or whenever we went through this, available online?
Yes.
Okay. That, to me, does a better, not that this is not doing what it's supposed to, but the work session materials cover the logic behind the number, which I'm guessing that is what most people are concerned about, and so is-
It'd be under the meeting.
Okay. And what was the date on that? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Are you asking for like the presentation that was done at the work session? Did we do that in February?
I believe so.
It was the February twenty-fourth meeting, but-
Okay, we can find the exact date.
Okay.
But it would be available for viewing.
Yeah. It doesn't sound like it's super easy for people to know where to go to get to it, so I'm glad that it's online, but if we could make it, it'd be just a little bit easier to do that, so.
Anything else from council? Hearing none then, thank you Travis. So next item, anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed ordinance? Anyone? Alright then. Is that a-
Just one question.
Why don't you come to the microphone, state who you are, please, and your address? And Travis, you remain.
This will be directly for him. Jerry Johnson, one zero four six one, Northwest Polk City Drive. I'm also asking for my brother who lives up the road, I'm not sure what his is, but I believe we are on the southeast sanitary sewer system right along the road where you're coming through.
Coming through.
Right, right along Highway four fifteen, right there, the two, only two houses that are on this.
Are you on the south or west side of Highway four fifteen?
It would be on the north side of four fifteen.
So if you're north of four fifteen, east of forty-four, you are actually on Anken's?
We are west of forty-fourth.
Okay, okay.
Where are those two houses?
Oh, okay, I, I know where you're at.
We got the big white cattle. Everybody knows us, yes.
Yeah, so that, you will be, yes, you will be just off of where the phase two of the Antler Ridge Trunk Sewer.
Okay, so we have to have, by zoning, we had to have three points, some odd acres. Will we pay by the acre, or by one hookup? And what will that hookup fee be?
Without knowing what your annexation agreement says, it would be by acre, but I don't, I don't want to say that that's for sure. I would have to look at your, whatever the annexation re-
Well, so I understand confusion on these processes, but to be clear, we're voting on the first reading of this, so would it be possible to get him specific information for where, what would it, how this, what it is now, what it would change to, so what this specifically addresses? And then even if this moves ahead tonight, there's still two opportunities if-
Okay, that, that makes sense.
Okay Travis?
I can coordinate with Jenny, and we'll get, get something taken.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are you the house with the Christmas lights?
Yes.
No, that's my brother with all the trees.
We have Christmas lights.
Good, good, your brother, those are beautiful. So-
Yes, and you say no, you fit in well around here.
She had more Christmas lights than I wanted to have.
Okay then, um, that's, well, it is, that's just, that is just an aside. So then I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
So moving on to item four B one, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash two hundred, amending chapter one hundred, sewer connection fees to add the southeast sanitary sewer district, the north sanitary sewer district, the northeast sanitary sewer district, and Big Creek Valley sanitary sewer district. A motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is the time and place for any item other than those that are a public hearing. Has anyone contacted you Jenny?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak during the public comments period? Alright then, we'll move on to item number six, which is consent items. I'll ask for a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Item seven, business items. A, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, approving West Bridge Road commercial preliminary plat. I, okay Travis.
So for council's consideration tonight, is a preliminary plat for the property currently located fourteen oh one, West Bridge Road. PC Developer Partners and McClure Engineering have put together a preliminary plat for the mass grading of this project site. In accordance with chapter one fifty-one, point ten dash four, the city shall not issue a grading permit or demolition permit until a site plan or preliminary plat has been approved by the council. This property has never been platted in accordance with Polk City Code, and as such, city staff is not in a position to allow a grading plan or, or a grading plan or tree clearing to occur on this property. So the preliminary plat in front of council tonight, it represents phase one of this commercial development. My understanding is that the property has somewhere in the ballpark of twelve to fourteen thousand yards of excess dirt that needs to be hauled off the site, include, and in addition to large, or a good deal of tree clearing that needs to occur, and as part of that, we would like to, or council needs to approve a preliminary plat to allow staff to review that grading plan. Within our review memo, there are several items that are not addressed as part of this preliminary plat in an effort to allow mass grading to occur without knowing exactly what's going to go on to that site, including traffic impact studies, any off-site improvements related to the traffic impact study. This preliminary plat does not include approval or allow, or allowable locations for driveways. It doesn't include any sort of utility service locations, cluster mailbox locations. It does not include a stormwater management plan, as they're not adding any impermeable surface to the property. Detention basins and stormwater management facility design will take place as part of a future preliminary plat or site plan. Geotechnical report would also be, and then there is an existing requirement on the property for interconnected parking lots in accordance with the West Bridge Road access management plan and policy, as well as there is an existing fee, Parker Boulevard paving fee associated with this property that would be collected at the time a final plat is approved. In essence, what this preliminary plat does is it allows grading, it allows the developer to make what's referred to as a pad-ready or shovel-ready site. It's more marketable for the developer, but then it also allows us to review some of the items that are being involved. One thing worth noting is on the north and east sides of the property, the developer is proposing leaving a large swath of trees on each side. In our estimation, the developer is not proposing taking down any more trees than is necessary as part of this first step. The preliminary plat does show one lot as part of the proposed preliminary plat. If the developer were to choose to have multiple uses or multiple lots, sell off a portion, it would require an amended preliminary plat. Trent Smith with ATI Realty is here tonight, if you've got any specific questions or if I missed anything, but be happy to answer any questions you may have. Staff and planning and zoning are recommending approval of this preliminary plat, subject to the items note, sorry.
So I did have a question. If they sell off individual lots, then each one has to have its own entrance, so on Parker, we could have multiple entrances?
So if they were to sell off multiple lots, then they would have to address many of the items of note, because we need to understand how it works. Bridge Road will not have any accesses, and then driveway spacing along Parker Boulevard would be driven by SUDAS requirements and findings of a traffic impact study. So the cha- so we would not permit a driveway based on each building, we would have to look at it holistically, and they wouldn't, Polk County would not allow them probably to sell off a lot until it's final platted. So all of those things would be addressed as part of a, either an amended preliminary plat or a final plat approval.
Council members?
Yeah, so I-
Go ahead Rob, go ahead.
I think I followed every piece of what you said, but the experience here is that both the house and trees were already taken down, and we're approving the preliminary plat without direction on what it'll be. So I, I just want to understand, is it solely based on the dirt work, or, I guess maybe it's more for you, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Trent.
Trent Smith. Yeah, I'm happy to, I'll, you can go through your question if you want, Travis can attack.
Do you want to address it Travis?
Yeah, so what's being proposed is it's mass grading, and if the developer were to choose to proceed with one lot, this would be the preliminary plat, but then we would have to address all the items of notes as part of the site plan. If the developer chooses to split it into more than one lot, this is no longer a valid preliminary plat, and the council would see it again as an amendment to that preliminary plat. So what's being proposed tonight is to get that property from its current state to a more developable and marketable state on a very visible corner in Polk City.
And maybe I asked this, but how was it able to get from what it was to what it is now without any approval?
Demolition permits are separate from grading permits.
Okay.
So any-
Okay.
The demolition-
The house, and then can they take out trees within so much of the house?
Within the work area of the home, so I think at least with where some of those trees sat, it involved sewer abandonment, or the, the service abandonment as well.
And all this is an inevitability, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand the cadence, which is a little bit different than what we typically experience, and, and people ask about where it's going, and-
Yep.
Uh, if we genuinely don't know, or they genuinely don't know, and, or don't want to share, that's fine, but it's, that's where we are, so.
Yep.
Council, anybody else?
Yeah, my comment was a question on, if they, go ahead with mass grading at this point in time. I don't see anything in here about erosion control. Do we have any ideas about what's going to be done on-
There is.
To keep it from turning into a giant mud puddle on Parker?
So erosion control is shown on the grading plan itself. It may not have printed very well, but the different colors represent tree protection fence, silt fence, and then erosion control. But because the property is over one acre, the property owner is responsible for adhering to all DNR regulations, and staff keeps an eye on that corridor pretty closely, just for various reasons, one of them being the active construction that's happening in and around that property, so we'll stay on top of it.
Excellent, thank you.
So the trees that they're not touching, if I'm looking at the right page, doesn't have a number on it here, but the map, the grading will be in the, in the pink and the red area? Is that, how do I tell what page I want?
Page two.
You'll want to come up.
I'm, I'm colorblind, Travis.
You'll want to identify yourself, please, for the record?
It's gray on here, so I, I can see why that's tough. So Trent Smith, ATI Group, sixteen fifteen Southwest Main Street, Acne, Iowa, representing the development on this project. So the, the grading that we're planning on doing as part of this exercise, it's, it is not shown really well on here, but it's, uh, it's shown by the surface, so you can kind of see the, the lines of the contour elevation, that's the proposed surface. Essentially, what we're planning on doing is there's a drainage way on the north side that drains the, the Drake Town Home Development, kind of through Quick Star site. We plan to leave all of those trees and not touch the drainage way until we have a reason to with a site plan or, or something like that, and we would, we pipe that if, if need be, if, if a site plan warrants that. And then we're gonna leave the east tree line that abuts the, the lakeside property as well, to kind of create some buffer between all the properties that we can create buffer while we do this grading exercise. So to kind of back up to, like, answer the question, why is this preliminary plat in front of you guys tonight? We have a hard survey on this. We're really excited about this project. We think it's a great corner in Polk City, kind of a gateway to this area that can see some commercial development here. And during our due diligence of the, of the property, there's SUDAS requirements for entrances with slope, accessible requirements with pedestrian routing from Parker that we'll need to have as part of the site plan process. And that really sets the guidelines for the slope that you can have on those two drives. So through some consulting we shared with the staff, we really don't have a project to date. We've ran some designs that show three buildings, that show two buildings, that show one building, and it really all boils down to export exercise somewhere in the range of, like Travis mentioned, twelve to fourteen thousand yards-ish, so twelve hundred trucks, a lot of material. It's kind of hard to believe when you drive by it, but there's about eighteen feet of fall from that south Quick Star entrance, that kind of point, straight over to the lakeside property line. straight over to the lakeside property line. Quite a bit of fall to put it in scale. I did this for commission last Monday. It's about the same elevation change across this property that has required retaining laws and things like that. So it's an issue that we have. We've poked around several projects in the area, asking if people need material, because it's always better to share material, material with another project. Polk City's just developing 40-acre subdivisions right now, and they usually can make those balance. But our demolition contractor, DeCarlo, won a project. It's near the marina, though I'm not sure if it's really that close to the marina, but they need 17,000 yards of material. It's been a blessing to have them win that project and them just happen to be on our project. And so their plan is to take that material in the spring to that project that needs it, to really make both projects work. So we're really just going to plane out the site so that we can get that material that we know will highly likely need to be removed from the property and take care of that issue for a tenant that's going to want to come into Polk City and really have that ready. We're really just trying to create market rate, competitive lots in conditions similar to, you know, the Hy-Vee lot, all the commercial properties that we compete with in Grimes and Northwest Ankeny. So when we get calls from commercial brokers, really the, the question is, hey, do you got any space in Polk City? Yep, we got a great corner here. All right, they're looking at, you know, Northwest Ankeny. Do you have something there? Do you have something in Grimes? So we just want to bring kind of a market rate, commercial condition for this property at this point in time. Like Travis mentioned, Nick, to answer your question about erosion control, since it's larger than one acre, we're going to have to have an NPDS permit that's going to have to be updated annually if this drags out and monitored after every rain event, and then 14, it's like 14 days after we quit work, it's going to have to be stabilized. So we're going to have to do that and monitor it. I live in Polk City, I'm going to drive by it every day, so I'll be on the phone with the erosion control guy often. What other questions can I answer? I'd be happy to really answer any questions you guys have tonight. I'd love to share with the tenants that we are bringing to town. We don't quite have that figured out yet. We've had a lot of interest, but not quite there yet. Looking at my notes, I think, I think that's really it. I think you did a good job.
Cliff has a question, don't you?
Go ahead.
Have you paid the assessment fees on their lot?
No, it'll be paid at the time of final plat, if I'm correct, so. They have been in our budget.
So Trent, what's your timetable? Should this be approved tonight? When are you going to start?
So our contractor will apply for a grading permit if that hasn't already happened yet, so that'll include the NPDS permit and other items related to kind of the fine-tuned details of the grading plan and erosion control. And whenever they get that approved, they would go. He thought he would go, kind of when the house was taken down, and then we discovered the Tree City requirements, and kind of this is a bigger thing than shoveling dirt out of a property, so.
We have received a grading permit.
Good.
So soon.
As weather allows.
Yep. Anybody? Jeff? Anything? Mandy? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trent. Thank you Travis. So let's move on with Resolution 2025-28 Approving West Bridge Road Commercial Preliminary Plat. I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Abstain.
Item number eight is Mayor Proclamation. I don't have anything written to read, but I understand this is National Library Week, April 6 through 12, 2025, so we celebrate National Library Week. Moving on to item number nine, Reports and Particulars will begin with staff. Anything from staff? Okay, anything from Chelsea?
I do have two things, so a follow-up to Rob Sarchet's question about the presentation we did on the sanitary sewer fee districts. That was at the January 27th work session, which began at 5:00 PM, and that is available on YouTube. And then I did just want to make a note for everybody's information that mass grading at the regional park has picked back up as of this week. So you will probably see some work being done out on that property. I would expect them to work on mass grading over the next couple of months, more than likely. That's all. Thank you.
Anything from council? And I don't have anything either, so it's time then for us to have a motion to go into closed session, and we will need someone to make that motion and a second then.
Don't you have to read the whole section?
You want me to read the whole thing?
Not the whole thing, just the chapter 21.
All right. Closed session under Code of Iowa, Chapter 21, Official Meetings Open to the Public, Section 5, Closed Session, Subparagraph I.J. "To discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price of governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. The minutes and the audio recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is complete." So we need a motion and a second to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. And roll call?
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
All right then, so anybody not invited to be in the closed session? Thank you for being here tonight.